Hi, we have some that are still clicking on the link to get on and I'm gonna play the sound in the classroom and the other will be muted so we don't have any feedback hopefully. So they're getting logged on right now if you'll just give us about another 45 seconds.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am, I can't make it up. Is that better? Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Abel, somebody wants to say hi. So we typically log on with Google Meet, so the buttons are a little different on this one. Okay Stephanie, we are all on and ready now.
Awesome, wonderful. Well, good afternoon, thank you all for joining us today. My name is Stephanie Doland and I am the Director of Development Services of the City of Brenham. And here in the room, we have the Brenham City Council and City Manager and then here behind me, we have various different members of the City of Brenham Leadership Team and staff. And we're all very excited to learn a little bit about the different city parks that you design, as well as the different cities that are that you design. And this is very helpful because our community is growing. We currently have about 18,000 people who live inside the city limits and about 33,000 that live inside Washington County. And every day, we have new people who come to City Hall and ask about building new projects. Some of them are new homes, some of them are new commercial projects. And I've seen in your presentation that has been put together by the various different groups, that you all have some great ideas about what you'd like to see in our growing community. So what we'll do today is open it up for questions. We're gonna go through the slides that have been prepared by Mrs. Raznawski. And what we'll do is turn to each of you for some questions. So we'll start with the park that was compiled by the team of Hunter, Colin, John, and Seth Fumi.
Seth Fumi, yes.
Mayor and Council, if you'd like to look at the first slide and if you have any questions about this particular park, this is the group that is available to answer questions.
Do they want to do an overview of their, what they did and why? Do they have somebody that wants to do that or what?
I like the name of your park and I like the name of it because live oaks are very peaceful. It's nice to have trees in a park. That was a great idea. I'm not sure what you have. Oh, you have a fishing dock. You wanna tell us about what you put in? May I not hear?
I think they're muted.
On a parking lot. Because we put it down there because that would probably be the easiest access to get to the park. And then we have the trails leading outside into the park around the nature garden we designed. It goes down into what we have as a playground, the food court and amphitheater. It goes up and then toward where our lake is, we have a fishing dock, a glass bridge, a paddle boat rental, and some tennis courts. We have lights along every part of the walkway. And then towards the upper corner, we have a camping place and an infirmary in the corner, a little bit across.
Oh, that's nice. What would you be showing in your outdoor theater?
Movies, maybe some plays.
Are any of these things suitable for adults as well as children?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's handy.
Out of the group we see on the screen, which group is talking? Somebody raise their hands. Which group has been talking?
It's the SH.
I just saw a visual.
Mayor, would you like to move to the next group? Okay, so perhaps we can move on to the next group. This is the Silver Ridge City and I believe it is the same group of individuals with a new layout for our downtown city center. Could you tell us a little bit about your city center?
Okay, so first, we added a Chick-fil-A.
Laughing, actually, we're cheering.
On the far south of the map, so the neighborhood could get its water sources. And we put a lot of factories next to railroads and highways. There is also... This town was based a lot off of Brenham.
How did you come on your name? That's an interesting name for a town. Silver Ridge.
I came up with that with, I was thinking about where I live, there is a lot of wood, out rocks, and ridges of rocks. And I would always call them Silver Ridges. So I created the name of Silver Ridge City like that.
Well, I just, I wanted to tell you guys, I'm Susan Kate, I'm the Director of Economic Development for the city and I just wanted to commend you on how smart it was to put the factories near the railroad and that's something that we see more and more in businesses looking to locate near railroads and I just wanted to commend you because that was very, very smart as a decision to put manufacturing and good jobs near those railroads for getting goods in and out of our community. Good job.
I think you did a good job of the schools keeping them away from highways and factories. I think that was pretty good.
Alright, very good, great job you guys. Alright, so we'll move on to the next group. Looks like we have Gunner Park next. Charlotte, Chloe, Brayden, and Eli. Can you tell us a little bit about Gunner Park? I think you might be muted.
Our park had a dock where the pond was and it also had an area where there were just dogs and cats, also a petting zoo and there was a park for like younger children. And there was also a bathroom in case. We had a parking lot that also had reserved just to be good and that pretty much is our park.
So I noticed that in the description, you included that there's no running tracks. Were you looking for more of a place to be with animals and see nature?
Yes, that's what we had in mind for when we did this.
So do you have a trail going around the lake?
No, we didn't.
What sports would you like to practice in your park?
Stephanie, what was your question again?
What sports would you like to practice in?
For like we could, children could come and practice soccer and over by the pond. That way, it would, there was a lot of room over there on that side.
Very good. Council, did you have any other questions on this park?
Did the park start off out to look like a gun or did that just happen by accident?
I think that was Eli's idea, but he's not here right now.
He chickened out.
He's not here, we'll blame him.
We'll blame him. It's an interesting name.
What kind of animals in the petting zoo?
So we have monkeys, we have llamas. We have monkeys, we have llamas, we have grams, dogs, cats, and we have goats, we have birds, and then we also have cows and... And then we also have... That's all.
That's quite a zoo, it's a wonderful zoo.
I like that y'all have a petting zoo because a lot of kids don't have room at their house to have all those kinds of animals. Not everybody lives on a farm, right?
Right.
Nice park.
So I think you guys are the next group to also talk about the next city center that was designed. Could you tell us a little bit about Mendora City?
Sure, we wanted to add a Chick-fil-A. We also added a family dollar and we needed like something from a family dollar or something. And then we added a Brenham Fire Department in case there's any fires or something.
You just have one fire department location?
Yes.
How did you come up with the name of Mendora City?
Say that one more time, I forgot to unmute, sorry.
How did y'all come up with the name Mendora City?
We combined Minnesota and Florida.
That's very creative.
Eli did it. Very creative.
It looks like you put the City Hall Building right in the middle of town. Can you help us understand why you chose to do that?
We put it, we decided to put it in the middle of the city so that even if they lived farther away, it would be able, it was just in the middle of the city and it would probably be easier to find rather than in a neighborhood or busy street.
Good idea, smart.
And again, I want to commend you all thinking about putting your factories that are gonna be making products and they need to get raw materials in and finished goods out, that you put it next to a highway to make that easier, that was a very smart idea. Council, do you have any other questions? Want to move to the next group?
Besides Chick-fil-A, any other restaurants?
There was a Los Cabos. Small neighborhood, so that people from, there was actually two neighborhoods next to it so that they would be able to get there.
Very good. Okay, so next we have Cub Park. It looks like the team members are Macy, Lizzie, Rex, Charlie, and Elijah. Can you tell us a little bit about Cub Park and your design?
So, we have a walking trail all the way around and we have a playground and a dog park and like some fields where kids can play sports. And then along the walking trail, we have some benches and some places where people can refill their water bottles. And then by the lake, we put like a fishing place and a splash pad and like a garden.
I like your idea of putting in a garden at this park. Would y'all want to do a flower garden or a fruit and vegetable garden?
I think it's supposed to be more of a flower garden.
Okay, I like it.
I just noticed they got a splash pad in there too. So have y'all used the splash pad that we have now? Is that popular?
Yes. Yeah, I had her birthday party last year at the splash pad.
It was awesome.
So what I'm hearing, y'all would like another one in another part of the city?
Yes.
Many of you have go to the skate park? Very many of you go to the skate park.
I do.
Not all the time.
I haven't really been there yet.
I've never been to one, so...
Okay, the young man that said he does.
I like to skateboard, but I have a scooter and I like to, I like to do the small ones, not the big ones.
I think it was really smart to put benches and water bottle refilling stations around the park with your walking trail. That's very smart thinking.
We got the idea from Holt Park.
I don't see a bathroom.
There's bathrooms, there's three bathrooms in the park.
Okay.
By the field and one like by the lake, but we have it in the key, but I don't think it's that.
Okay, I see it now, thank you.
Very good job. Can you tell us now a little bit about the city that you designed? I believe that your name is Bluebonnet Hill.
Yes, it's Bluebonnet Hill. It's it.
That's a Chick-fil-A.
So what makes Bluebonnet Hill the perfect place to live?
There is a bluebell right next to the railroad track and there's food stations and lots of schools. And there are three grocery stores pretty much right next to each other.
Can I add something onto that?
Yes.
So I think it's good that we put the fire departments by the highway so that if there were any crashes or fires on the highway, the fire department would be able to go right there and help.
That's a great, great plan. I think that would help with the emergency response time to be right on the highway. So I think that's really good planning.
And the restaurant's easy for travelers going by.
We put lots of them on the highway so it'll be easier for the people to go around, like go on the highway and see where...
Are they easy for the people who live in town to get to also? Or do you have some restaurants in the town for people who live there? And you have a Chick-fil-A. I think that is fantastic.
Can you tell us what's located next to the stream? Does it remember?
Which one?
Either one.
The upper one, one of the top upper part of the map.
There's some grocery stores and...
And a restaurant. And a neighborhood.
Where's the police station?
It is in the lower part of the map.
Okay.
One by the highway.
How many schools do you have located in your city? How many schools?
We think six probably.
What about the library? Do you have a public library or is it located?
The high school is by the river and there's a little one down the highway. And then there's two by this little street and then another one.
There's all ten, like in the middle of the boulevard and like the, what is that?
Okay, well, thank you guys very much for telling us about your city center. It's a great, great design and great city to live in. We'll move now to the group that designed Brenham National Park. I believe that's Jackson, Ryan, Lily, and Ben. Can you tell us about Brenham National Park and what you've designed?
We put some more equipment. We made a little fire truck that had slides and swings and a little platform. And we had some racing tracks and then one of those things that, it's like a parachute that you pick up and you go down under it. We have volleyball, monkey bars, soccer ball, soccer field. We have a train ride and we have a track all the way around it. And then we have a fishing store and a dock. And also, we have a planetarium.
Tell me about the rainbow, the parachute area with the rainbow. What's the rainbow?
The parachute area is, so I don't know if you ever heard of one, but so each person grabs on to one of the controls and they lift it up because it's kinda like an airplane, it's that thing, but it's smaller. So you pick it up with your hands and then the people run under and slip places.
Sounds like it was fun.
So you say a go park track and then you also say a racing track. Racing track for racing what? You're talking about running foot races or?
It's for running on foot.
The racing track is for foot track.
I like that you've got a planetarium in there. That is real creative.
What happens in the entertainment area?
In the entertainment area, people can like show their, like, they can perform something that they like, like their talents, like if someone likes singing or likes plays, they can sing something or like do a play.
And then there's like puppet shows. Like if someone wants to go there, all the stuff that they need will be right there.
Okay, can you tell us about your next design? This would be Brenham National, the city center.
So the city is, we have a neighborhood, but it's kind of in the lower part of town, but kind of in the lower middle. And we have a motel to the left of it. And you wanna talk something? We have an academy on the upper side of it and we have a couple of stores and stuff like that. And we have a lot of restaurants between the highways. But we don't have much stuff outside of the highways.
Glad to see you have a hotel. I'm glad you have a hotel.
Yeah, so that, um, it's by a neighborhood and if people wanna stay, um, in the hotel overnight when they're, or through a couple nights when they're trying to find a home in Brenham.
Yes, very nice. Very handy.
I don't see a Chick-fil-A in this town.
We thought other people were gonna do Chick-fil-A, so we didn't.
I like that you have academy.
We do an academy instead of the, um, Chick-fil-A.
I noticed that in the question and answer portion, you listed that the highways and railroads are locations where not to put neighborhoods. Can you help us understand um, why neighborhoods next to railroads and highways might not be the best location?
Well, we put one by a, um, by railroad, but, um, we tried not to put them by the highways cause the highways are, um, very noisy and stuff like that, but it's by the, um, that's one of the bigger spots to put the, um, neighborhoods where there's streets to go places. So we put them by the, um, streets to go places that are big areas, but it just happened to be that a railroad had to be there.
So what's the most important reason I would want to live and move to Brenham National, the city?
Um, because we have, um, like, our. So we have a neighborhood by a hotel, which the hotel people go to stay overnight when they're finding a place. And then we have some parks and then some, uh, some really good restaurants. And an improvement for Brenham is the academy, which we did not have. And we do have a couple of schools too.
Good job, you guys.
Hey Jackson, this is Dane. Did, um, you didn't, you didn't get an NFL stadium or a, um, or MLB stadium in there?
He doesn't know who you are, Mr. Rowell, with that mask on.
I think that's a smart business decision. They didn't put a Chick-fil-A like everyone else.
That's right.
Okay, very good. Great job Brenham National. Appreciate your design and telling us about your different locations to live and work and play. We're gonna move to the next group who designed Rubik's Park. This is Grace, Austin, Maddie, Avery, and Chloe. Can you tell us a little bit about your park and how you designed it?
Yes. So, our name of our park is Rubik's Park and we did many things on our park. And first of all, we put a sign so people know where they're going and what park they're going to. And we put many stuff today. We put a little like walkway, right? We put a walkway right across so we can get places, so. And then we got a playhouse, a volley, volleyball court, and we got like trash cans and water fountain so people can refill and do stuff like that. And then we got stuff so kids can play. And then we got a pergola and we got bumper cars and we got bench and then we got a dog park.
Can I, can I add on to that?
Yes.
Um, around the walking trail, we have, around the walking trail, we have a bathroom, trash can, and water fountain, um, and little spots all around our park just in case. And at our lake, we can boat and fish. So, but, and you have to throw the fish back when you do it. You can add on to that. I think we have a merry-go-round and, um, two slides and we have swing. We have a swing set in the corner of our park. And we have monkey bars.
Is that all in your park? Where did the name Rubik come from? Is, is this like Rubik's Cube? It's a, it's a puzzle? Is your park a puzzle?
So. So Austin, he thought of Rubik's Park. Did you think of it like the Rubik's Cube?
Yes.
He thought of it like the Rubik's Cube, the little puzzle, but it isn't so exact same.
Very interesting. What are y'all doing in there?
I'm so sorry. We don't know either. We're trying to figure.
What is that at the top of the lake, the round design? At the top end of the park? What is that?
Oh, that's the dog park. Um, you can just walk your, you can just walk your dog around it.
Something on there is.
On the side of it.
Okay, and the structure at the bottom left of your park, what is that?
So this is a pavilion and it has fixed tables and trash cans and water fountain inside.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do people need to bring their own fishing poles to fish in the lake or there're gonna be fishing poles there?
There'll, there'll, there'll be fishing poles there for them to use.
Is this gonna be a park that only children can fish in or can adults also fish?
Everybody can fish in it.
Hey, we're designing a lake at our new park. So what kind of fish would y'all like to put in there and how big?
Big trout, a cold fish. Um, we would put perch and bass, um.
Alright.
And that's about it.
No sharks.
They're not fish.
Tell us about your city now and why we would want to move there.
So in our city, we added a hotel, an olive garden, and a Target. We added the olive garden because we all, that's the restaurant that we all would like. No one else would do that exact thing.
What kind of, you said you wanted, uh, restaurants and businesses. What kind of businesses would you want to bring into your town?
We, we would want to have a, um, Target.
Anything else?
You have Target, you don't need anything else.
Say it again, louder.
No, sir.
Good man, thank you.
So in your questions, you said that there is good use of land, but little land to do it. Do you feel like Brenham is getting bigger and that there's not very much land left inside the city?
Yes.
And you're absolutely right.
So in your questions, you also say that one thing that makes your city nice to live in is the placement of your homes. You said you thought about where to put your homes. So can you elaborate on what you mean by that?
So what we mean by that is it's not too close to highway to where, to where it's gonna be where it's loud or it's not close to railroads either.
Very good.
Do you have your schools close to the neighborhoods or are they gonna, you're gonna have to drive a little ways to get there?
You have to drive a little ways to get to some of our schools, but not all of them.
Alright, well, excellent job to the Rubik's Park and City team. Y'all did a fantastic job and we appreciated learning about your designs. So we'll now move to the Space Park team. This is Will, Gretchen, Lily Kay, and Carter. Can you guys tell us about your space park and what's located in your park and what makes your park special?
There is, uh, two restrooms because we have a concession stand and people will have to bring their own food. Get some there. And we have a bridge and a ball park and a soccer field and basketball. And we have an obstacle course. We have the tramp weed, um, that's built into the ground. So if you jump, you, you won't fall off.
Good.
I like that.
I like that. That's really good thinking.
Um, I would like to add on to that. That everything is space themed.
So when you're, when you're on the trail, are you kind of walking like you're on the moon?
Uh, not really.
Okay, okay.
The group earlier, one of the earlier groups had a fire truck with a slide on it. If you got, say like a shuttle or a rocket that you play in and slide down, you got that designed into your park?
You can be on their team.
You can steal my idea.
So I think you guys might be one of the original thinkers, um, when compared to your classmates about planting some new trees in the park. Can you tell us why you chose to add additional trees?
We planted more trees because, um, well, first we had tree lights on these trees, but it's a little hard to see. Where at night, it'll, the lights will shine up and it'll look good. That's one of the main reasons why we took the trees. Another reason why we got the trees is because it helped with the oxygen in the air.
Yay! Yes, yes.
Very good. Very good.
Good thinking.
Now, do y'all have a, uh, garden or anything like that in your park?
Yes, sir.
Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
Where, where is it? And what type? Is it vegetables and such or flowers?
She said they didn't have.
Don't have one.
That was a no. Well, how about fish? Do you have any fish in your pond? Do you fish in?
Yes, we do, but not a lot of fish.
Oh, just kind of for, for, to look at, not the fish pool.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's nice. Give the fish a hug. Maybe the starfish. Yeah.
Okay, can you tell us about Space City and why you designed your city to be the way that you laid it out with the different uses?
We added a Wendy's by South Austin Street. We also added a Costco next to Dairy Queen.
Costco.
Highway, so if people wanna shop, they can just stop right off the highway and Costco will be right there. We also added a new neighborhood because we felt like there needed to be a neighborhood back there cause there weren't very much.
Where did you put your ne- new neighborhood?
We put it like at the end of North Austin Street.
Oh, oh, okay.
And it's by a school too.
Very good, yeah.
Walk to school. I just realized. The other fifth act, do y'all have a hospital in your city? I don't think we talked about that with the other groups.
I don't think so.
Nobody gets sick in Space City.
Yeah, there's not a hospital.
Did you add Book Nook? Is that what you have located centrally in your city?
Can you please repeat that?
I, I think, I see that you've added a, a store named Book Nook. What's, what's located in the very center of the city with the long line? Yes, that right there.
Uh, the Washington County Courthouse. Yeah, there's Herman Furniture.
From the courthouse directly to the left, what is that?
At Book Nook.
That's a great story.
What is, uh, how, how many schools do you have in your city?
We have four.
Four, okay. Are they spread out around the entire city or some up close to each other?
Um, there's like two, like, other at the front of it and like two close to each other at the back of it.
Okay.
But they're pretty spread out.
This is our last group in council. Do you have any other questions?
Well, I would love to live in any one of the cities. I don't care which. I don't care which one it would be. Y'all did a fabulous job.
Thank you.
Ms. Rosnowski, did you have any other questions for us?
I don't think we do. We really appreciate y'all taking the time. I know y'all are super busy. Um, there's a lot going on in our little small town. And I know some of us are campaigning right now. I'd like to everybody with that. Um, we just really appreciate this experience for our kids. And we were so bummed about all the things we didn't get to do this year. So, we really appreciate y'all doing this virtually, um, so that we can make it happen for them and they have some good memories to take with them to fourth grade.
Enjoy it, thank you.
Well, it's fun for us too.
It's close up and getting to know you when we sat down for pizza last, the last several years. It's been fun to really get to know all of you.
We had some little third grade, third grade twins to some of our city council members that, that year. Yeah, I know, it's, it's sad, but we'll get through it. And, um, we have, we've made a lot of accommodations this year virtually. So, uh, it's definitely not the same, but it still is something that is special for these kiddos to get to do, so...
And we hope that next year, we will be back. So, maybe we can come visit you guys in person again next year. Again, thank you so very much for taking the time to work with our students. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you and your kiddos.
Before you sign off...
Len.
Before y'all all go away, I will put you on the spot. Dr. Tavlin, our school superintendent, join us. How do you know if you wanted to say anything for...
So, first, first thing to you guys, man, what a great representation of Brenham ISD. I'm, I'm sitting here behind my mask with a grin as wide as I can get it. So, great job young people, great job. I'm very proud of you guys. I know I took a lot of research to figure out everything from the lines to what stores would work best to your comments about where railroads go and, and highways go and, and neighborhoods. So, again, great job. And then, I'm gonna say to you guys, I am blown away by the people in this room. It took an hour out of what I know is your busy day to help these young people learn. I mean, I, I applaud you guys. The process of learning was just on display from start to finish right there. Challenge with a task and the process of learning for skills in life, right? We wanna make sure our kids are learning the skills in the context in which they're gonna use those in their life. They researched the problem, documented the problem, and at eight years old, zoomed to a group of adults and defended their creation. Man, again, it doesn't get any better than what we just saw right there. That is amazing. So, great job, great job, very proud of you guys and thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you know anything else, we can...
Okay.
Close the meeting and adjourn.
We will close the meeting and thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.